I'd like to call the board, the Springbrough Board of Education for September 24, 2025. Will call.
Pat Palage?
Here.
Good.
Yeah.
Shall I help? Here, Stukey?
Here, please stand for the floor.
According to allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
Second.
Will call.
Palage?
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Shall I help?
Yes.
Stukey?
Yes. Is there a motion to approve that the August 27, 2025 meeting minutes?
Second.
I'll help.
Will call.
Palage?
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Shall I help?
Yes.
Stukey?
Yes. Is there a motion to approve September 10, 2025 meeting minutes?
Salute.
Second.
Will call.
Palage?
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Shall I help?
Yes.
Stukey?
Yes. Um, 2.1 is participation, Springbrough Education Association. Hi. You guys here are classified. Is there anyone here that they might just be classified? Any, no prearranged, correct? Okay. Shouldn't be any public participation on any agenda item? Okay. To the work session participation, anybody can, during this work session, can ask questions if they want to. So I guess we're up to Tara for the financial forecast, yes?
All right, um, I'm here to present the Oxford, or we're gonna just call it a financial forecast since it's not a five-year forecast anymore, and I'll explain that a little bit more in-depth. But basically, an overview of what the forecast is, is it is anything that is changed from May until now that I'm gonna kind of go over and mainly talk about the changes and then some of the things that we have coming up. Some of the main changes that we're gonna talk about tonight is changes in state funding estimates, and then future funding due to House Bill 96 for the next two years, our funding is different. And then revenue expenditure is not known at the time the forecast was modified the last time, we'll talk about that. And then we'll talk about attrition because we have significant attrition dollars in the forecast now from the changes in staffing from last year to this year. So the changes in the forecast due to House Bill 96, we're now required to submit our current year budget as well as three future years. And so it's a little bit different because in our budgeting system, we have cash, and so, you know, because we have cash carryover for previous years, so our budget in our system is usually generally a little bit higher. And that way, if the board approves something, I don't have to go back to the county auditor and increase the appropriations every time the board approves something that was not in the forecast. And then I just modify the forecast during the next forecast period, and it just is a little bit more efficient. Well, now what they're doing is they're going to be grading districts on the current year budget that they submit, how close you are to actuals. So I've had to lower our system to be closer to what I actually believe is going to happen in the five-year forecast. And I think the reason that they're doing this is because they're trying to expand the authority of the Budget Commission to allow them to limit collecting taxes for districts that they don't feel need the money or can show the need for the money. Our district, we carry very low cash reserves, as you'll see, so I don't feel that will ever affect Springbrough, but I think that's why it's a statewide change that happened with House Bill 96. And then in addition, they're also changing the forecast dates. So it's been May 31, and then, and then November 30 is what the current prior to House Bill 96 rules were, and now they're changing it to August 31 and February 28. Those are very strange dates, and they're kind of in lucky times for us budgeting-wise because we have very little data to kind of know how we're doing. But those are the dates they've changed, and for the first submission, they're making it October 31, or October 15, sorry, instead of November 30. So going forward, I'll be bringing back another forecast to you guys in February to approve, and then it would be August 31, and February and August 31, much from there. So that's another interesting change. And I think it just happens to be about 90 days before each of those elections. So the May election, February will be about 90 days before the May election, and then August 31 is about 90 days from the November election, so that's kind of interesting. All right, so our forecast, you will hear that our forecast has changed since the last time, but our trajectory is not changing. We are still running in towards deficit spending. It's very small, that's why I hope you guys have a printed copy, but it's about 421,000 in fiscal '27 that we're expecting to deficit spend, and that number grows to fiscal '30, to 3.9 million. And I do want to give a caveat. You will still see the regular five-year forecast on here, I'm presenting that. I'm gonna continue to do a five-year forecast just for planning purposes, but when I submit it to the state, so when I bring it back to you for approval at the next board meeting, it will only be the current year and three future years. This is strictly for budgeting purposes so that we can see, because it's also interesting that if you look at most districts' cash balances out in 2030, there's a huge nosedive in a lot of districts. And here, you won't see that anymore when you only are looking at three years, so you don't necessarily see that cliff in the last year that a lot of districts will experience. In fiscal '30, again, this is not going to be part of the current forecast, but in fiscal '30, we are still expecting to be at about 12% cash on hand when we close as of right now, and that is above our 10% cash balance reserve policy, 6,200. So currently, we're looking okay, barring no other changes, but I am gonna hit on a few that might be coming our way. So in the last year of the forecast, 2030, that's still on here, we would be at about 44 days of cash on hand. All right, so this is a little graph here. This is our current year, 2026, that is what we're expecting to receive in total in revenue. And then here, I put this little thing here because this is our reappraisal, and this is important because of some of the possible changes that could be coming our way. I currently have 10% in as our next reappraisal. If you remember, our previous reappraisal that we went through in 2024 was about 26% increase. I only have 10 in here now because typically, the more information we get through sales, which is how these are derived, why reappraisals are based off of sales of people's homes, and then they have to raise the value for all of the other homes in their areas, on their streets, in the subdivisions, to get them up to what those houses that did sell were valued at. So I have a 10% in here, which would be really low, because it would likely be higher as sales are still strong, but with all of this property tax reform out there, that would be really reckless to put it at any more than 10% right now because it looks like that might not even come to fruition. So on here, you can see, I put in our fiscal '25 actual revenue, and then the rest of the future years. These are the changes that have occurred from May to October. So I did adjust down here a little bit, you see these small little negatives. We are seeing a little bit of delinquent taxes, a little bit more than we normally see, but again, our collection rates are super high. So our estimate that we had in the forecast was a 99.7% collection rate, actual collections were at 98.86, so it was a little decrease, so I did adjust for, there are some delinquencies. But usually, we'll pick those up in the next period, but I will adjust the forecast if that occurs. But then you have your second half due during the next tax collection, and so they might be late for that because they're paying the previous, so I just kind of kept it going. There's also another House Bill that has went through, and I haven't even got a chance to talk to you guys about this because it just happened recently. But starting for tax year 2027, House Bill 15 has been passed that any new PUP, so Public Utility Personal Property Value, any new value for PUP is no longer going to be valued at that 88% of the full value, it's now going to be only 25%. And so if you remember, I did talk in Columbus, you know, several months back, about another public utility provision that was out there. They were trying to take all current public utilities and just change it to that 25%, and Matt Nolan was pivotal on this, but he said that would be the single largest tax increase in Ohio of history if all of a sudden, all of your approved levies, those amounts have been approved. So if all of a sudden, a whole bunch of value for all of those public utilities went away, the taxpayers, the residents, would have to pick up the difference because they've already been approved for the school district to get those dollars and then the other, you know, public offices in your county. So that did not go through, so I think their fix then was this, where, okay, we'll keep your normal value, but any new value that you get for additional personal property that these public utilities are purchased, that are gaining in value will no longer be at the 88%. Not a big thing for us, but I did have to bend back because I had about a half a million dollars in additional value. Each year, I lowered that down to 150,000, so you'll see a little bit of reductions in that. Then on the state funding, this is our single biggest increase here, is House Bill 96 did heed additional dollars for our school district. They did not put any money into the Fair School Funding Plan, the base cost, they did not update those. But what they did do is they said, okay, for fiscal '26, we'll give every single student in your school district, in every school district in Ohio, $27 for fiscal '27, and an additional $40 for fiscal, or for fiscal '26, sorry, $27, fiscal '27, and an additional $40 per child. So that did bring in 153,000 extra dollars for this year and 226,000 for next year. In addition, they gave a performance supplement for high-performing school districts. And so it would be $13 per child, times the number of stars you receive, times the number of students you have. So I have calculated for this year, for fiscal '26, based off of our current star rating, we'll get 331,000, and then I am predicting a five-star for next year, so that would be 368, and I can always bend that down if I need to. In addition, in the state funding line, we're going to receive $75,000, I'm estimating, $75,000 additional dollars in our threshold cost reimbursement, because it has been going up. And they have, they are working towards making everybody have a state minimum of 50% transportation funding, and so I did add an additional 85,000 for that. So that's the main changes. I did back down on the state share of the local property tax, I bent that down as well because that follows line 1.01, the real estate line. So as people are delinquent and paying their taxes, we're not receiving those reimbursements until those taxes are paid, then the state reimburses us for their portion, the 12.5%. So that's the main changes for, for forecast. Now, that did add additional dollars, and so we'll talk about that here in a second. I did want to just point this out, I won't spend a lot of time on this, but I want to make sure that people realize that we are heavily, heavily guaranteed in our district. So we're a 10% state-funded, minimum state-funded district, and then we get categorical aid on top of that. But it basically, we are basically being funded at fiscal '20 levels. So the funding guarantee basically says no school district will receive less revenue from the state than it did in fiscal '20. Well, we would have gotten less unless they kept us at the fiscal '20 rate. That was something that was trying to be pulled out during the House Bill 96, but it stayed in. So you can see that we go up to over $7 million in guaranteed dollars. So if that changes at some point, they start lowering those guarantees, we would take a big hit. But why this is important too is when I mentioned that they are not increasing base cost, but what they did increase, so in the funding formula, there's two main sections. There's the cost, so what it costs to educate a child today in Springbrough, and then co-pays. So they didn't update the cost, so right now, our costs are still at that 2022 level right now in the base cost. So they're looking at our district's cost from 2022, but they're looking at fiscal '24 and '25 for your property values and your income. So when they're updating property taxes and income, that almost a 26% increase for us, but then they're saying our costs are still at this lower level. What it's doing is it's pushing more and more of the cost down onto the local taxpayer because it's gonna say, you're wealthier, you can get the money locally. But it's because they're not updating the cost, they're only updating the other side of the formula, which is showing that we have more wealth. So that's another interesting thing that's been happening, is it's just the continued shift from the state to the local taxpayers. So at the end of the day, on revenue, our revenue is anticipated to increase 2.5 million over the forecast period, that's largely due to House Bill 96, but you can see our trajectory, it's staying very similar. Our current forecast is the dark line, and the dotted line was our prior forecast. So we're improved a little bit, but again, on the exact same trajectory as we were before. And then, and for, at the end of the forecast by 2030, again, 2030 won't be on the actual forecast, but in the fifth year, we would need to cut expenses by almost $4 million if we did not want to be deficit spending. So that's just a target that we watch for. It's not uncommon for school districts to be a deficit spending as you have to work towards needing new revenue or cutting expenditures. All right, on the expenditure side, I have our current year, and then 2030 is the final year. You can see with the, about 80% salaries and benefits, 13% purchase services, and 7% for all of our other expenditures. That's just a general breakdown of our costs. But when I look at what's changed from May to October, we had a lot of attrition from retirements and resignations, almost $690,000 in attrition. We had 26 retirements or resignations. We used some of those dollars to get some of the things that we really needed that were identified within our Panther experience. Some of those items are, we added an intervention specialist, ESL reading intervention teacher, some part-time music at Clear Creek, and instructional coach, cybersecurity, and a new SRO. These are some of the things that we added with some of those attrition dollars, but at the end of the day, we ended up with a net attrition of 447,000. And so you will see, there's a large reduction in salaries going forward because those are also combined. So if you think about it, those 26 staff members, their salaries and their increases in salaries were projected throughout the whole forecast, so when they leave, and you reduce it in year one, it reduces all of the additional costs as you are expecting them to receive increases. So we have a reduction in salaries due to attrition, and then the benefits that follow that as well is gonna be another reduction. On the purchase services side, we did add a little bit, our utilities have been increasing, so I have added additional dollars for utilities. We have seen some additional costs, or anticipating additional costs for special education, so I have bumped up those estimates about 150,000 for that, to anticipate for some of those increases. And then supplies have stayed relatively flat, it's a big, about $4,000 increase from May to November. So when you look at our forecast on the expenditure side, we've reduced expenses by about $2.1 million, and that was largely due to all the attrition dollars that we saved throughout the forecast. So if you think about it, we increased our revenue and we decreased our expenses, so we definitely are looking better. But still, you'll see, our trajectory has really not changed. We're going down to about 44 days of cash on hand by 2030. And right here, you know, you're getting into this shortfall here, but we can start to make changes, you know, now or within the next couple of years to kind of limit that. But then, the caveat is gonna be, what about property tax reform? And so that is definitely going to affect what is happening. And so I want to talk about that for just a second. This is a net, you can see here, with the reduction in expenditures and addition in revenue, we are expecting to increase our overall forecast by $4.9 million over the forecast period. So that's an increase in cash balance by 4.9 million over the period. But it's important to note that that is with a 10% reappraisal and no property tax reform. And so I wanted to just hit, if I could, on the property tax conversation. So what we're hearing, I heard something just before I came here as well, that it doesn't look like maybe the vetoes are gonna go forward, the veto overrides that they have until December 31 of next year to override. There were a couple provisions that would affect Springbrough in there. They're saying it doesn't look like that's gonna go through, but what they think might happen is House Bill 129 might go through, House Bill 186, and House Bill 309, so three potential things. One of them, House Bill 309, is where they expand the Budget Commission's authority, where they can maybe not collect certain taxes and distribute things to the schools. Again, I don't think Springbrough would be affected by that because we carry low reserves and we will be able to show the need for all of the dollars that are coming our way. But House Bill 129 and House Bill 186. House Bill 186 is where they're wanting to cap districts on the 20-mill floor to inflation. So, you know, depending on what number they're gonna use, if they're gonna use the Consumer Price Index, or they're gonna use some sort of a other number, you know, of course, they don't tell you any of the details when they're really going through the bill, they just say some number on inflation. Well, that can be different by county, that can be different by state, that can be different, you know, a lot of different things. So if you think about, in '27, we have a 10% in there for our reappraisal, well, if it's like a 2%, you know, increase, that's 6% over a three-year, because whatever decision they make, it'll be for a three-year period at least, because they make it for all three years until your next triennial update. So if they were to say, okay, CPI says 2%, so then that would be 6, well, we have 10, so I would have to go back in there and remove 4%. If it's a 3%, then we might be closer to 9, and we have a 10%, so we wouldn't be that off at that point. But regardless, if that were to occur, we would lose a few million dollars for sure, depending on what that looked like, because we do have a 10% in there. So thankfully, we don't have anything higher in there, but it does sound like that one could happen. The other one that they're saying that is very likely to happen is the House Bill 129, which includes the substitute levy in the 20-mill floor calculation. So when I did that calculation a few weeks back to present it, it would be about a four-and-a-half-million-dollar loss to our district. We have a 4.38 substitute levy, we're at the 20-mill floor, so we would go from 20 mils plus the 4.38 to 24.38, boom, you're off the floor, all of your levies, all the way back to the 7, they decrease, and they continue to decrease until you get to the 20-mill floor again. So for us, if they also coupled it with inflation, it's gonna take us a little bit longer to get back to the 20-mill floor. So I think what they're trying to do is make it to where every single increase a school district receives, they have to go ask the voters for those increases. And so I think that's the bottom line when you really look at it, they're targeting 20-mill floor districts who are getting increases without a vote, and they're trying to limit those increases as well. So that, I don't know if those are gonna go through, but what I'm hearing is, is they're kind of letting some of the vetoes go so that they can start up the one bill, those bills that are already sitting there, because there's about 30 property tax reform bills right now sitting up at the state level sitting. So if they let the overrides go, they can start to proceed with some of these House Bills that are out there, and I'm hearing that those are the three that they're really focused on. So.
Not for now, just out of curiosity, how many districts are on that board?
Two, I wanna say two-thirds.
That many?
That many. Now, how many of those, I don't know how many of those had a substitute emergency levy, but I can get this calculation, but most of the districts are. No, it wasn't much smaller number until the last reappraisal hit, and there's some of the other districts that are in a reappraisal coming up, it's gonna make even more of them. And so I think that's also why it's such a, you know, hyperactive thing, that's right. And before, when it was just a few, it was like, you know, but now that it's affecting so many more, there's a lot more people, I think, in there here. So. And then I just, I put on here, special education numbers, basically, we increased to the fire to Sarah, but I've been talking about when we were at the state level, you know, we spent $12.2 million in '24 on special education, and we received about $700,000 in revenue. In 2025, we spent, last fiscal year, we spent $13.5 million, received $612,000 in categorical funding, which was about 5% of the funding that we got. So 95% of the costs are being pushed out of the taxpayers, whereas the state only picked up 5% of the cost for, you know, our most vulnerable students. And so we always watch that because we've been really pushing for them to increase the categorical funding for some of these very high-need students. So that's just something, when we were going through the House Bill process, we were really trying to get them to increase that, but we didn't get anywhere, but I already had the data, so I thought I would share that. And then this was just something I put in the back of the last one, too, just kind of talk about some of the things that we've done to try to not ask for, you know, new money, but still try to meet the needs of the district. So we converted that emergency levy to a substitute levy, so we've received about almost $6 million in new construction revenue on top of our normal emergency levy that we had. And then we did the no increase in taxes bond levy in 2021 to generate 2.7 million, and then obviously, we have the bond on for November, 115 million on, that would be also a no increase in taxes. And then the cost containment plan that we put into 2020 that we still live through today, most of those things have all continued, and those savings are already in our current forecast. We've done the elective site-in options, which has saved us about 3.3 million, and then attrition savings that we just did for this year. So we work hard to try to keep our expenses and live within the expenses that we have and be mindful to not have to ask for additional dollars, knowing that they are giving us additional dollars because of the 20-mill floor, we're just not having to ask for it. So just trying to be good stewards and show that we're, be transparent of what we're trying to do and stay away from asking for new money. Do you guys have any questions? I know I'm always full of good news.
Well done, Mrs. Stacy.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions?
It's so quiet in here.
3.3, are there any committees?
There are, yes.
Norm was here yesterday, yes.
Yesterday, we had Policy Committee, we had House Power Committee, lots of policies coming your way on October 9th, October 21st, but I'll do that summary sheet for you. And truly, 90% of them are technical changes to House Bill 96, so a lot of word spending, there were a lot of ODE, ODE still lived over, so ODE was the change, that type of stuff. But we'll have first read on October 9th, and then the second read is October 22nd, and I'll give you the summary of the morning so that you can read through that. And then today, we had our Panther Parent Council that we've been reforming a little bit, and we had a full house, we had 12 parents, so every school and two representatives, it was just huge. Our principals also attended, and that parent council's gonna be led by Tara and myself this year, probably ongoing. But we really wanted this council to be kind of a think-tank so that we can hear what is really happening and what is on parents' minds. And so we took time to discuss the format, the bylaws that are new. Also, we looked at the calendar, when we're gonna meet, and then we picked some topics to go over this year on top of having time in each meeting, to just have dialogue and discussion on things that they're hearing or is a concern to them. And so our October meeting, they wanted a bond meeting that's informational only, and it's gonna be fact or fiction because they're hearing a lot of things out there, and we're gonna make sure to provide true facts around questions. So it was, it's a good one.
Can I flip Norm's committee to that one?
No, because policy is a board committee, Panther Parent Council is a super executive committee, because you're welcome to go.
Everybody down there. Okay, any other business, 3.4? Okay. Tara, you're up again.
All right. All right, 4.1, well, 4.1 and 4.2, they're all separated. Item 4.1 is the approval of the August 2025 financial statements, which are all on board docs for year review. Just some highlights, we brought in $8.1 million in revenue, we're having lots of tax revenues as we're only doing right now. 6.2 million of that revenue was for tax revenues. 1.5 million was our state funding, and 373,000 was miscellaneous revenue for pay-to-participate fees and school fees. On the expense side, we spent $5.8 million for the month of August, the majority of that is salaries and benefits. We did, our salaries were a little higher for August 5 than normal, we did have the final science of reading reimbursements, about $46,000, but those will be reimbursed to the school district, we'll receive those probably next month.
We'll receive those probably next month sometime. So that will be a reimbursement, but they look a little bit higher just because of that. But as expected. And then the new pay for teachers was September 5th, so you'll see September 5th, and the rest of the school year will be a little bit higher. We also have supplemental coming out in September. So at the end of August, we ended with $26 million on hand, which equates to about 129 days of cash on hand. So we're looking good now, but then obviously, our tax advances are going to stop, and we're going to start spending down until the next set of tax advances go in. So that is item 4.1, and unless anyone has any questions. We also have item 4.2, which is the approval of the fiscal '26 permanent appropriation resolution. That one is the one where I was talking about during the financial forecast piece, that it will be your current year budget, and then three additional years. So the current year budget, they're using the appropriation. So that appropriation resolution will match what is spent to the state for our current year budget. And so those two need to be voted on September for date.
Okay, any questions there? 4.3 is our motion to accept 4.1 and 4.2.
Second.
Questions? Roll call.
Balaji?
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Psychop?
Yes.
Stuki?
Epstein.
And then I'll go through the rest of them. So item 4.4 is an approval of a donation of $250 from Lady Prentler to the Purple Star Club. Item 4.5 is an approval of a donation of $250 from Jack Reiser to the Trigotzi Program. And then approval of a donation of a golf trainer, sorry, why I said that wrong? Gate trainer, with an estimated value of $500 from Laura Workman to be used in the special education classroom.
Okay, is there a motion to accept 4.4 and 6?
Seven.
Second.
Roll call.
Balaji?
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Psychop? Yes. Stuki?
Yes. Mr. Tooten.
Good evening, Mr. Board Vice President, members of the board. I come before you tonight to seek approval for our personnel report. Certainly a couple things I'll add on here for retirements. We're going to miss our fifth grade teachers at five points. Laura Jenkins and Ben Little, done a great job, stapled the community, and they've impacted so many lives. We're excited to see them go through the school year. Additionally, Wendy Stapleton at the junior high, our special educator, she does a pain-passing job. I know she's helped immensely since I've been there, I've seen her firsthand, so we're going to miss Wendy as well. Also, I want to call out a recommendation that we have on there, and it's similar to what happened before Tyler came to the junior high, when we needed additional administrative support, that we are recommending that Jessica Jones, who's a little bit of a lullaby initially, she's there, as you know, Mrs. Waters is not in, and Jessica's just really stepped up. She's on, and has her job, she's been in very close communication with us throughout this process, and we expect that to continue.
Okay.
Pull this up, no questions.
Yeah, we need to move on to is there a motion to accept 5.1?
Any discussion on the degree sheet? Is that a step?
Absolutely, so this is over the job of organizing support and parents in terms of rotations, and we all have second go at sport. And then we're working on how we're going to break evaluations. Our court by a party agreement only allows the building administrators to conduct future evaluations, so for the process work, I'm going to be, this is Monday, we're really going to evaluate where she is, and where we need to go. You got plane?
Okay.
Roll call.
Balaji?
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Psychop? Yes. Stuki?
Yes. 5.2, the athletic report.
And so I come before you tonight, Mr. Board Vice President, seeking approval for our athletic report. And you'll see, even though it feels like we're meeting, and to fall sports, we're seeking approval for winter sports, they'll be here. Go ahead.
Okay, is there a motion to accept 5.2?
No moves.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Balaji?
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Psychop?
Yes.
Stuki?
Mr. Vice President, members of the board. Two contracts on the agenda tonight, both for tuition for private placement. I did want to make a note and remind you that I know we continue to bring additional contracts, but also, we don't come to you when contracts fall off or discontinue. And we are well within our budget. The two on the agenda tonight actually were budgeted and planned for. We knew these students would be starting a little bit later in the year. That was all in plan, and we are on track for the year, so. I did want to say today, first day. I'll sit here.
Motion to accept 6.1?
Second.
Any discussion? What's the typical reason why someone would fall off? Is it just moving out of the district? Is that?
Sometimes it's students moving out, and then that tuition transfers to whatever district they went into. We are working right now very actively with a student who's at the Learning Center to transition them back to the district. They've been there, they're meeting all the goals, and we're getting ready to bring them back. So then that contract would fall off as well, so a variety of reasons, but the two, the two biggest ones.
Roll call.
Balaji?
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Psychop? Yes. Stuki?
Yes. 7.1, any announcements, future consideration?
Tara, we have the money goose tomorrow morning for a community coffee.
Where?
Not mine, the money goose. You drink coffee, or no, the money goose. So that is tomorrow, we're excited about that. Homecoming this weekend.
What time is it?
8:30.
Can't do it. Discussion, I'm sorry, comments, Sarah?
Can you join for coffee? Not at 8:30. Not at 8:30. We'll say that. Just want to say, comment, thank you for the donations. And Tara, we seriously, it really is appreciated, like, you know, all these different updates on the different house bills that are out there. It's, you know, it's always interesting, I mean, with tax reform, but yet, the state isn't planning on giving us any additional funding, waiting. So definitely very imbalanced of how things are financed.
What was this, the percentage that's on the taxpayer versus businesses, or?
Yes, there's two things. That one is, I think it's like 70/30. It used to be 50/50, now it's more 70/70 for homeowners. And then also with the state, we will hit, in fiscal '27, we'll be at the 32% state share, which is the lowest state share in Ohio this year. So, just.
Those are Ohio numbers?
Those are Ohio numbers, yes.
Because I would imagine we're running lower.
Oh, we're, yeah, we're 90/10.
Yeah. Our community.
Yeah, so it's the state as a whole, so the districts, you are funded a lot higher. We're at the 90/10 split. But as a whole, you add everybody together, and the average would be 32%. And when it was deemed unconstitutional, we were at 43%.
But the state is sitting on a very nice rate here.
Oh, yeah.
And they're not going to try to contribute to help.
They have $600,000 to give to the funds. We hit 280,000, we need to tighten up.
Hasn't helped a bit. We did it last Sunday.
So if you need us to do anything, you know, I guess a couple of analysis, Senator Wilson, and to do a good job, so just let us know.
Just show up, be ready enough with these, you know, house bills, going through that process, and that would be wonderful, if we can coordinate to maybe get some of the people up there.
And just, you know, high school, shout out to the high school kids, student council, like, seriously, every year, they do such an amazing job, and just ask them, like, so amazing.
Yeah, I was just going to say something, so just thank you, Tara, for doing an excellent job, very clearly, right now, of all of the changes and some of the things that may be coming down the pipe. And as Sarah said, you know, just let us know, and see how we can continue to help advocate for some of the things that we would like to see as the rates of these changes. But very clearly laid out and explained, so thank you for your work on that. And thank you to those folks that donated, as always. Yeah, I think that homecoming this weekend, that school is a great, and the COVID goes very smoothly and safely for the students this weekend for homecoming. It's a little brown talk, brown's not going to sink the lines, so. Too bad for this week.
Yeah, again, it does, your great, great presentation. Some of the takeaways that I have are, you know, I think the number of, the volume of bills that have been coming down the pipe from Columbus related to tax reform is pretty unprecedented. I think I've been on board for eight or nine years. Historically rarely talked about it, impacts to us, because there were very few impacts, and now it's essentially every bill has some significant impact. And, you know, the second thing that's really interesting is what's advertised, you know, kind of is the goal of the bill, tends not to match at least the impact to us as a community. So I think it's really important that you keep doing, you know, your great communication because, you know, kind of the tagline of the bill, and what ultimately happens to the community of Springbrough and our schools tends to be very different things. So appreciate you highlighting that. Again, thanks for the donations, echo that hopefully homecoming is another great event, very safe, and hope Panthers on Friday.
All right, thanks for the donations, like everybody else has said. Tara, you did a great job. You're still getting, you still get the biggest bang for the buck that we pay. I mean, as long as I've been here, it's been that way. I just back to.
79?
Yeah, we've always.
I was four.
I'm saying, we've always got the biggest bang for what we pay and stuff. You just continue it.
It's a village.
It's getting a little tougher, though. Yep, homecomings this week. Unfortunately, it fell on a game that was going to be really tough for us. We'll kind of beat up to some evidence of that, so. I think that's about it, appreciate it. So go next, 8.1, move into executive session to talk about specialized details of security arrangements. Is there a motion? There will be no action.
Do we do a little bit of Balaji?
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Psychop?
Yes.
Stuki?
Yes.